Happy New Year and welcome to the School Board Meeting. Thank you for attending whether you're here voluntarily or involuntarily. First, on our agenda, if you'd like to, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the light for which it stands one hand in the fist.
And first of all, I'd like to ask, are there any scouts in the audience?
Welcome.
If you wouldn't mind, welcome. And if you wouldn't mind, could you please stand and state your name, which school you go to, and which badge you're working on, if any?
Hey.
Did you say Jaden Pierce? Your parents. Yep, he does. It's been awhile, but he does.
Welcome. And I hope you enjoy the meeting, and if you have questions afterwards, please come up and talk to us. So yeah, thank you for coming to the meeting. Any other scouts?
That's it.
Okay. Let's see. First we have on the agenda is our Agenda Adoption. We have the agenda before the board. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move for adoption of tonight's agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A, the agenda is adopted. Next on our agenda is an informational presentation on Upward Bound. And for this, I would like to bring forward Bill Omen, Executive Director of Secondary Education. Bill?
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to introduce Maria Cabrera. She is the Center Director for the Upward Bound Program, housed at Evergreen High School, serving students at Evergreen, at Heritage High School, and also at Fort Vancouver. She's going to introduce Arturo and talk about his role, and also talk about the partnership between the two school districts, LULAC, and how we're serving students in our community. Maria?
Everyone, like he said, my name is Maria Cabrera. I am the Upward Bound Director at Evergreen High School, and we do work with 20 students from Evergreen High School, 20 from Heritage, and 20 from Fort Vancouver. And our goal is to increase college retention and graduation within six years for our student. We are federally funded program sponsored through the LULAC organization. They apply for the grant. We are one of the only Upward Bound programs in the neighborhood area, and we are hoping to partner up really closely with WSU. We already have relationships with them to get our kids the resources that they need in order to be successful both in high school and their high school career and in their college career. My partner, we're a team of three, or two and a half really. I am the Director. Arturo Santana is my Coordinator, and we have an administrative assistant that helps us as well. And I'm going to have Arturo come and introduce himself briefly, and then give you a couple more details about our program.
My name is Arturo Santana. I'm the Program Coordinator for Upward Bound. So like I said, our office is at Evergreen, but I am the Program Coordinator. So I spend a lot of time at Heritage High School and at Fort Vancouver High School, talking to students about high school, where they're struggling, what I can do to help them, what the program can do to help them. And like I said, we work with 20 students from each high school, so we're still in the recruitment process. Need the program, need the assistance. Like a student, that doesn't mean we're going to turn them away and not provide them any...
A lot of things that we do are things that teachers wish they could do, that they had time to do, and that parents had time to do as well. We offer advising and mentorship and tutoring. We take kids on college field trips and on career exploration field trips. We serve as the know-how for families that don't know to navigate or how to navigate the school system. We are all, all three of myself and my two other staff members, we're all first-generation high school graduates and college graduates. And so we want to help bridge that gap that we had to endure because our families didn't know the process. And so we are that bridge for our students in getting into colleges. Right now, our primary focus is on freshmen and sophomores, but the goal is to grow, to follow the 60 students from freshman year through high school graduation, and then six years afterwards until they get their BA. Currently, we're only working with one senior, but he's already applied for his FASFA, got in scholarships, and is on track to go to WSU. Like I said, our aim, our goal is to get as many kids into college as possible, so all the things that we offer, all the seminars and workshops and tutoring, is open to all students, not just our students. We mandate that our students go, but we also open it up to any other students in the school. We're working with resources already established at the school, like the Career Center and any workshops that they already have, resume-writing workshops, job and career fairs. And then, not only are we working with them, but we also sponsor our own events, and we try to help with the schools as much as possible. That's pretty much our little overview, and I will open it up for any questions that you may have at the moment right now. Our grant is written for those three schools. Mountain View has adelante America. They have their own program there. Or Driving Dreams. America adelante America is at Fort, and Or Driving Dreams is at Mountain View.
I have a question. So it's 20 students per school, the three that the grant is written for. So, and it depends, mostly right now it's freshmen and sophomores, it sounds like, but you have a graduating senior, so does that mean that just one, you just have room for one next year, or however many graduate to keep that number to 20 per school?
Correct. So we keep 60 per year, and however many kids graduate, that's how many we recruit the following year. It is, it's the first year we're doing it, so we're hoping to grow the program, but right now our limit is 60.
Okay. That's great.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm always excited to hear about programs, especially to encourage students that may be the first generation and their families to attend college, so I applaud that effort. Any other comments? So next on the agenda is the Monitoring District Operations portion of the agenda. And first, has to do with, members of the board have received a revision to Board Policy Operational Expectation Number Four, which is Personnel Administration. And I'd like to call upon Superintendent John Stich, who has revised this policy. John?
So a couple of weeks ago, when we were in workshop and presenting the interpretation and indicators for Operations Expectations Four with Personnel Administration, we had a discussion on the selection of highly qualified and best-suited candidates for all positions, which is Item Three on that Board Policy. And in that discussion, the board expressed a desire that our workforce should more closely look like our student population, but also realize some of the constraints that we have with hiring, and wanted to reaffirm that we wanted to hire the best candidates possible. So we brought forth language to revise that to where it would say, "Select highly qualified and the best-suited candidates for all positions, and take proactive measures towards recruiting diverse candidate pools more closely matched to our student population." So we brought this back for first reading at the previous meeting. I haven't had any comments from the community since we presented it for first reading. So at this time, I would ask the board that they accept the revisions to Board Policy OE Four Personnel Administration as presented for second reading and adoption.
Okay. I'd like to call upon the audience to see if you have any questions or comments about Let's see, so I guess I will call for a motion.
I move that the board accept the revisions to Board Policy OE Four Personnel Administration as presented for second reading and adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'd like to open it up to the board for comments or questions.
The change in the additional wording, I think it's indicative of how we feel as an organization, and qualified for a position has an opportunity to work for our district, and that we really do want our kids... Have kids see adults that look like them, and all of our kids have the experience of working and being taught, or have employees that represent different nationalities and great big world and a more diverse...
Thanks, Vic. Any other comments or questions? We have something from the audience. If you have a question, if you could come forward to the podium and state your name and address.
My name's Robert Zerfing. I live on Northeast 42nd, and I just have a quick question. What's more important, the teacher being qualified or looking like the student?
I guess what we're talking about here is, in our policy, we're talking about hiring the best qualified candidate, so there's no question about that.
But you're adding a different criteria to it, like an extra stipulation, it sounds like.
What we're talking about is proactively recruiting in diverse areas.
And to create a more diverse pool. It doesn't mean that only certain groups will be hired. It just says that we want to make sure we have a diverse pool of the highest qualified employees, and that is the intention there.
How do you do that? You have X number of people that apply. How do you diversify that?
Like with any recruiting that we do in general, is to create opportunities as we go out to fairs, what do they call, job fairs, thank you. Job fairs, making sure that we are very open with our hiring policies and who we are as a district, so that people know that this is a place, a good place to work, that we're looking for the most qualified, and that we're very open to all candidates that meet those criteria to be here and to be considered.
Great, thanks.
That answer your questions?
Enough.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was the point I wanted to just clarify too, with Board Policy. I mean, it still states that we would be hiring, and I guess I would just want to verify that with John, that we're still hiring the best qualified candidate, right?
Right. We didn't change that language, and that was the discussion that we had last month, was that the expectation is I hire the best qualified candidate for every single position, but the board's desire is that we don't just passively accept all the applicants that apply, but we look at what our applicant pools look like, and if we don't have the same diversity as our student population, we go to career fairs that may attract candidates that more closely match our student population, and we encourage those individuals to apply for the jobs, but then out of that pool, we still hire the best candidate possible.
Are there questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote. So all in favor to approve OE Four as revised, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so Policy Operational Expectation OE Four Personnel Administration has been approved as revised. Okay, next on the agenda is Operational Expectation Seven, which is Asset Protection. And members of the board have received the reasonable interpretation and indicators of OE Seven Asset Protection. And I call upon Dr. Stich for a first reading of this report. John?
Okay. So just for those new to our School Board meetings, this last summer, the board passed a series of 12 Operations Expectation Policies, which very clearly outlined for me as the Superintendent, actions within different areas of the district that I must take, actions that I shall not take, and then actions that are reserved for board authority. Following the adoption of those policies, it's my role to go back and interpret those policies, and then provide the board with indicators for each section of those policies that I will bring to the board on an annual basis to prove compliance to the expectations of the boards on the way the district is operated. The policy we're looking at tonight is called OE Seven Asset Protection. It has multiple sections, and just because this is first reading, I've been going through these in detail, sharing what are those expectations and what are the measures that we'll be bringing to the board on an annual basis. So overall, Asset Protection says the Superintendent will assure that all district assets are adequately protected, properly maintained, appropriately used, and not placed under undue risk. The first section says that the Superintendent will maintain property and casualty insurance coverage on all district property within limits equal to 100% of replacement value. So annually, I will be providing the board with a summary listing of all contractors working for the district over the past year, including the date of expiration of their insurance coverage, and any evidence desired to confirm adequate coverage. Because not only are we worried about our own casualty insurance, we're worried about those contractors that work for the district. The second part of that is the Superintendent will provide the board, the district property insurance policy summaries, meeting the board's expectation of 100% replacement value, along with the budget amount and the actual deductible billings for the previous year. One exception to that that I've pointed out to the board, there is no district in the state that can afford full earthquake coverage of 100% replacement value. It would be too significant of a part of our annual operating budget even to attempt to get that type of a coverage. So there is the disclaimer that the 100% replacement coverage does not include earthquake coverage. We are part of a cooperative, and there is a maximum exposure by the insurance cooperative, and if the big cascade quake hits, we would get our percentage of whatever that maximum payout would be based on how many schools and how many districts are impacted by that earthquake. So that is probably our one area of exposure is to a massive catastrophic earthquake. Seven Point Two says the Superintendent will maintain both errors and omissions and comprehensive general liability insurance coverage, protecting board members, staff, and the district itself in an amount that is reasonable for school districts of comparable size and character. Annually, I will be providing to the board the insurance policies covering errors and omissions and wrongful acts made by either the Board of Directors, school district personnel, or the district as an entity, at a level at or above that of an agreed-upon comparator group of districts. So we'll be providing what that comparator group of districts is. This probably will be accomplished through a letter from our insurance carrier, rather than providing you all of those insurance contracts. The Superintendent also will provide the board the insurance policies covering general liability comprehensive coverage for the board, the district personnel, and the district at the agreed-upon comparator groups. And we also agree that this could be accomplished through a confirmation letter from the district insurance carrier. Seven Three says the Superintendent will adequately protect the district against theft and misappropriation of funds by any personnel who have access to material amounts of district and school funds. There's four different evidence, pieces of evidence that we'll be providing to the board. We will be providing the independent financial audit report from the preceding year indicating that the district has established procedures in place to adequately safeguard district funds from theft and misappropriation. We will then provide the independent audit report from the preceding year indicating that the district has followed our established procedures that are in place to adequately safeguard district funds. Also provide the independent financial audit report indicating that all funds have been properly managed and accounted for during the preceding year. And then we will also provide to the board the insurance policies covering any potential significant loss due to theft or misappropriation of funds. So we'll give you the procedures, verification we followed the procedures, the actual accounting, and the insurance, just in case something does happen. Section Seven Four, the Superintendent will protect intellectual property, information files, records, and fixed assets from loss or significant damage. This gets into a lot of different areas once we started digging into it. Part of this has to do with physical records, so we'll give you a summary of all the physical district record storage locations, that'll include the types of records, the duration requirement for retention, and the types of physical securities in place. We will provide to the board a summary of the software protection systems and a list of any hacking of district data that resulted in theft or damage over the previous year. We will provide to the board a summary of the network and data storage system diagrams to provide evidence of redundancy of systems to ensure that business-critical data is protected against single failure loss of data. We will provide a list of third-party providers and evidence of agreements to establish data backup systems with our third-party providers. We will provide the board a summary of the district data sharing agreements with all external organizations that have the ability to access or share critical business information or student academic records over the previous year. And we will also provide the board with a fixed asset inventory audit report, and in the event of any identified theft or damage, an explanation will be provided covering the recovery and reporting response for any such loss. Section Seven Five, Superintendent may not allow facilities or equipment to be subject to improper use or insufficient maintenance. We focus this because we do have a separate policy on district facilities that covers our preventive maintenance. This is really on user groups and leasing of school facilities. So we will provide the board a summary of all district facility renters, along with the indication of liability coverage amount and the expiration date for all of our renters. And then we will also provide the board a summary of the district facility renter acknowledgement of district procedures and expectations for the use of district facilities and equipment and equipment. We'll note if there was any significant damage to district facilities or equipment over the past year to improper use, and what recovery actions that we took for that loss or damage. Section Seven Six, a Superintendent may not recklessly expose the district, the board, or the staff to legal liability. I will be providing the board with a summary of all completed legal liability actions against the district from the previous year. The board, and the board or staff to review, or over the past year to review with the board, to determine whether there was, any of these were the result of purposeful or negligent actions or allowance of actions by the Superintendent. Sorry, that one's kind of a tongue twister. Also, on that one, any evidence provided by the board in this section where the Superintendent performed purposeful or negligent actions or allowed actions of others can be presented to show noncompliance with this policy. So anything that you bring up from the previous year where you show that I haven't upheld this. Section Seven Seven, we're almost done with this, there's only three more sections. Superintendent may not invest funds in investments that are not secured or that are not authorized by law. So we don't actually get to invest our funds, the county does that for us. So we will provide the board an annual summary of district financial investments, including beginning and ending of year amounts, for each account accompanied by a letter from the county certifying their control and compliance with all such investments. Seven Eight, the Superintendent may not purchase, lease, sell real estate, including land or buildings. So I will provide to the board a summary of all real estate, including land and buildings, purchase, lease, encumbrance, and/or sale agreements from the preceding year, including the date of board approval. And the last one, the Superintendent shall not take any action to damage the district's public image or credibility. And this is one that is somewhat subjective, so I put it on the board that if you feel I did anything to damage the district's credibility and public image, you are to present evidence to me at that time, and I will include it as noncompliance. So with that, those are the things that we will be tracking and bringing back to you next year in our first monitoring report on this, assuming that you approve it tonight. So with that, at this time, I recommend the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for OE Seven Asset Protection as presented for first reading, and move it forward for second reading and approval.
Okay, thank you, John. So this portion of the discussion, I call upon the audience to see if you have any questions or comments about the first reading of this report. Are there any comments? Any? Okay. So we're closing the portion of the audience participation for discussion of this report. I call upon the board for a motion.
I move the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for OE Seven Asset Protection as presented for first reading, and move it forward for a second reading and approval.
Second.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. I'd like to open it up to the board for discussion, questions or comments about this reasonable indicator, or reasonable interpretation as well as indicators for this policy.
I just have one question on this one, and it may be in the other one that we're going to review tonight at workshop on facilities, but we talk about the paper retention or computer retention. What about like retention for like, because I couldn't see on the facilities one either, but like old desks or chairs that have just been like storage? Is that under this one, or the one that we're going to read tonight, or is it in any of them?
Or plus equipment, you mean?
Yeah, just like inventory, I guess, the physical...
That's fixed assets. I think that, that's a good question.
I just thought about it earlier, and so I don't know which one it falls under.
There's also storage of a lot of consumables that haven't been, I guess, picked up or used in years because of whatever change.
Well, yeah, just some things just get outdated or not used anymore, or you know, new footments purchased, but that doesn't necessarily mean you get rid of the... I was curious about that when I was reading through the facilities one, and that made me think of that as we read through this policy, so I'm not sure where that falls in.
I think that would probably actually fall under Seven Four with fixed assets. The fixed assets of the district have been inventoried on a two-year cycle.
Okay.
So we have legal requirements based on the attractiveness, mobility, and the overall cost of certain items that we do definitely have to inventory, but we don't inventory everything in the district, like not every single desk is inventoried. But if you want, if you want us to get down to that level, we can go back and discuss, you know, how we track where all the desks are going and the chairs are... I'm just trying, I'm also trying to make sure that we're not overburden, or becoming overly burdensome on this.
Yeah, no, I know, I really understand that. I was just like thinking about, because like, I guess in a business, you would like have all of that inventory in your assets, like you mentioned, but then you would, somehow it would be, like, how do you know?
Yeah. We hang on to those until we surplus them, and we do have a policy in process for surpleasing.
I think it's really important that the public is very aware and clear on the fact that we feel the responsibility to protect the assets of the district. And while we all consider our children our biggest asset to protect, we still have an fiduciary obligation to make sure that all of our, all of our assets are protected. So I appreciate the level of detail that you went into in your interpretation, and... Oh, thank you for that.
I think it's worth mentioning that we are still interpreting all of these policies using a reasonable person standard and not some narrow legalistic interpretation. And I, he gave me a little smile to see the sentence, "This does not mean that a decision or an action by an individual will never embarrass the district." That's a good clarification right there.
Yeah, I thought that was a good interpretation to add in there.
The buck may stop with you, but it doesn't, you get to be responsible with that being guilty.
I can't control everybody every minute of every day.
And it's a good reminder that we're all human, and we're going to do the very best we can.
Any other comments? I guess one comment I would make is, when you were talking about intellectual property, it looks like there's a lot of work that was done in terms of protecting, say, the software that we have within the district, especially as we go to having devices in the hands of our students. It sounds like we're trying to be as, I guess, as complete as we can in that area, right?
I believe so. I think if you compare the work that we've been doing with our data sharing agreements, with our personal identifiable information protection with students, I would put us in probably the top 5%, 10%, looking at Derek, top 2% of the districts in the nation. in probably the top 5%, 10%, looking at Derek, top 2% of the districts in the nation. We have been pretty cutting-edge with some of the stuff, and it drug out the adoption of several of our curricular resources because we had an expectation that if they weren't willing to sign our data sharing agreement, we weren't going to enter into business with them. And coming from a district where it was the Wild West because we couldn't afford attorneys to do all that work, I feel a whole lot better. And it's, it's not going to get any safer than it is right now. If anything, it's going to be getting worse over the next few years. So this is an area that, I mean, Derek has sleepless nights trying to figure out how we're going to protect ourselves and keep our kids safe.
I think in a lot of ways, it's going to be a best, another best effort kind of thing is that we'll do the best we know how to do. Like student safety, we have to prepare for those moments when, and have some plans for those contingencies. And I see that in your reasonable interpretation.
You know, and just like what Todd read, or what you read about that I can't control everybody every day, we can't control what attachments people open in emails, and that's one of our biggest worries right now, is all the phishing emails that are coming in, and who's going to open what, who's going to open into our network. So we've got some plans to go out and do some awareness and some training over the next few months with staff to try to reduce our risk in that area as well.
I guess the worst of every organization.
Back 30 years longer, ever since email was invented.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll now take a vote to accept as a first reading the reasonable interpretation indicators of OE7 asset protection, and to then bring it forward for a second reading and approval at our next board meeting. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so it passes, and we'll bring it forward for a second reading at our next board meeting. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a monitoring report. And this is on OE5, which is financial planning, and the board has received a monitoring report for this policy. And at this time, I'd like to call upon Mike Merlino, Chief Operating Officer. Ooh, you're fast, to be able to present this report. Mike?
Yes.
Knew he was coming.
Yes, I had a sense of it.
Rush is up there, because you can't.
Yeah, this is the most exciting moment in the meeting, when we get to talk finances and monitoring reports. I knew you were ready for it. So what you have in front of you within OE5 is information with respect to monitoring the financial situation in the district. There are a number of bullets within OE5, and so what we've done is kind of created documents that respond to each of those bullets. The first of the bullets is 5.1, the superintendent will develop a budget that is in a summary format understandable to the board and presented in a manner that allows the board to understand the relationship between the budget and the results priorities and any operational expectations goals for the year. So what we've done, and what we will continue to do, is look at the actual budget document that we create annually, and by spending activity, match up the activity expenditure to the operational expectation. So what you have is a document that lists each of the OEs with respect to, there are, I think, nine of them, let me look at the OE5, eight, yeah, total of nine, looking at all the different operational expectations within the district, and then how do we spend money within those areas? The budget document that's provided by every district in the state is very, it's very full of numbers and accounting codes and kind of explanations that aren't real thorough or easily understood explanations. So what this particular area of OE5 is trying to do is look at how are we actually spending our money and attaching it to areas of interest that the board has identified. And then at the very end of that document summarizes in a chart format, each of the OEs, actually, there's 12 OEs, each of the OEs, and then in a pie chart, where are we spending as a percentage in all of those areas? Now, you've had an opportunity to look at this, so I'm not going to go into detail, but in my mind, it's much more descriptive and gives the board a much more transparent understanding of how we're actually spending money and how it matches with the board's priorities as set out by the OEs. So that's the first one. The second of these is, the superintendent will develop a budget that credibly describes revenues and expenditures. We have evidence of that. Throughout the process, we have meetings with the board, we have meetings with the community, we sit and explain and go through these things. So ultimately, the evidence of this is the, is the passage of the budget. As I mentioned, we have individual meetings with each of the board members where we outline the information that's in the budget and give a thorough explanation and opportunity for conversation back and forth. So ultimately, the, the evidence of compliance in this document is the public hearing and the approval of the budget resolution that was adopted last August. The third of the OE bullets, the superintendent will develop a budget that shows the amount spent in each budget category for the most recently completed fiscal year, the amount budgeted for the current fiscal year, and the amount budgeted for the next fiscal year. So you have a document here that outlines by program area, and then, by program area, all of the various expenditures within the district that matches that. So you've got the actuals for 1516 on this document, the budget for 1617, and the budget for 1718, which gives you the ability to kind of review, what are we actually doing versus what we're budgeting? Does there look, do there look like there are any anomalies? And again, I think, I mean, I've been here for quite a while in the district, and I think the district, the board has always done a really good job of meeting and being involved with these conversations. So this is another way of showing evidence, but a lot of it is in the ongoing conversations that we have throughout the year as well as during the summer. 5.4, the next one, the superintendent will develop a budget that discloses budget planning assumptions. I think this is a document, again, we have conversations about it, but it's a document that's real transparent to the community, that talks about what are the inflation assumptions, if we're talking about contractual items in the contract, just program, as well as then what are the assumptions of enrollment? What numbers are we looking at? How do they stack up year-to-year? What is the staffing on a certified and classified basis year-to-year? What are the assumptions there as well? The next bullet, 5.5, the superintendent will develop a budget that assures fiscal soundness in future years. We have not completed this particular section yet. OSPI, Office of Superintendent Public Instruction, is to implement a four-year budget template that the legislature implemented through House Bill 2242. So when they, when the legislature came up with a new financial plan, they have an expectation that districts present publicly not just a one-year budget, but a four-year budget so that we get a sense of the soundness financially in the future. OSPI then is tasked with coming up with a template for school districts to use. They have not done that yet. As soon as they have done that, we would implement at that point. I would say all of that with the understanding that the state legislature doesn't always know from year-to-year, let alone month-to-month, what the plan is going to look like for the next four years. So we're kind of, we're doing as well as we can with the information that we're provided from the state legislature. The next, 5.6, superintendent will develop a budget that reflects anticipated changes in employee compensation, including inflationary adjustments, step increases, performance increases, and benefits. So you have a document that lists by employee group, as well as nonrepresented employees, what the salary increase is that's budgeted on a year-to-year basis. Also have information with respect to new items that were in the contract, whether that's E, EA, whether that's EEA, the teachers' agreement, EAA, the administrators' and principals' agreement, or any of the PSE agreements. So you can see on that document, I think, pretty detailed. Again, I don't want anybody to think that you were unaware of the things that we were doing in the past, because we always have conversations, but they're all embedded in this, this big budget document that you approved one time. We have conversations, but now this will be part of the process so that it's very visible to not just the board, but to the community as well. The next document, the next bullet talks about, the superintendent will develop a budget that includes such amounts as the board determines to be necessary for its own governing function, including board member training, consultation, attendance at professional conferences and events, and other matters identified by the board. And, yeah. And so 5.7, you see that there's a budget calendar that outlines the trainings and things, the agenda that's going, as well as a piece, a part of the budget that specifically identifies the school board's budget, so that you understand where those dollars are budgeted to support the functions of the board. 5.8 is the next, and we're, as John said a moment ago, I'm almost done as well. I understand that this isn't everybody's favorite thing to talk about, it is mine. The 5.8, the superintendent may not develop a budget that plans for the expenditure in each fiscal year of more funds than are conservatively projected to be available during the year. And then 5.9, the superintendent may not develop a budget that provides for an anticipated year-end fund balance of less than 5% of the previous year's, this previous fiscal year's actual general fund expenditures. So the last document shows both 5.8 and 5.9, it gives the total amount budgeted for revenue, total amount budgeted for expenditures, so it shows that excess of revenues over expenditures. It also shows the amount that is in financial reserve, so it shows that we are over that 5% threshold that we talked about. Again, in my mind, this is very thorough, more than what I would guess school boards and, well, I don't know about school boards, more that communities are seeing with respect to how the budget fits with the priorities and how we try to make sure that the funds are going into things to support the students in the, in the district. With that, I will, I will go to a separate document that says, "At this time, I recommend the board accepts the monitoring reports for operational expectations OE5 financial planning as presented for first reading and move them forward for a second reading with evidence of compliance."
Thank you very much, Mike. So at this time, I'd like to open it up to the audience for any comments or questions about this monitoring report. Okay, I don't see any. So at this time, I'll close that portion of the conversation, and I will call upon the board to make a motion.
I move the board accepts monitoring reports for operational expectations OE5 financial planning as presented for first reading and move them forward for a second reading with evidence of compliance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will now open it up to the board for discussion. What comments and questions do you have?
I really, no, I have an opinion. I just really appreciate the more transparent way of presenting the budget, because our budget is complicated, and just looking at it, it can become overwhelming. And so breaking it down in a way that's easy for anybody to understand, because I think it's really important that our public know what's happening, because there's always concern about, are we making the best use of the money that our taxpayers are paying for the, for the students' education? And so this is a good way of demonstrating our responsible use of resources. And so I appreciate the work that you've gone in to make that a more transparent document.
Much more, like you mentioned, the big thick document that we all have available and available for the public, but it really doesn't mean anything except for a bunch of numbers and tables. This way, we can see like what's important, what the board values as far as our expectations and how those numbers align. So I like this work.
I really appreciate the lens that, well, I went straight to the, to the pie chart.
Me too. That's what's going to come in.
The lens that shows us, you know, the learning environment takes up 85% of the budget, which is roughly equivalent to the graphs and things that we've produced in the past for instruction, right? But breaking it down into personnel administration, financial planning, really lets us see the ratios of those important support activities as compared to the main activity. I also just wanted to comment, it's like, if there's anybody in the audience that wants to see this report that didn't know it was there before, you know, come talk to one of us, and we can give them the link to have a look, but I appreciate.
And Board Docs.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing, is teach them how to use Board Docs or something. And yeah, this is, this is great. I like seeing the alignment.
I think from a process standpoint, that we do need to note that not everything is in compliance with this, when there are exceptions that were noted and highlighted in yellow on the report, that by next year, they should be in compliance.
One thing I'd like to say is, yeah, maybe echoing what Rob was saying on 5.1, where we talk about our priorities and allocating our budget towards those priorities. I mean, for me, it's the first time ever to see, you know, how our budget aligns with those priorities. So I really like taking that, you know, first stab at, you know, how we allocate our budget. And then the other thing I really like is 5.6, where we have a summary of the compensation, you know, makes it much more clear, you know, in that area, so I appreciate, you know.
I did have a question about that.
Okay, go ahead.
When we're looking at the 5.6, the certificated staff increase assumptions are split between the COLA and the TRI. Is that a 5% increase to TRI?
Yeah.
Or a 5% increase to total compensation?
Right.
Okay.
So the TRI percentage increased by 5%.
Right.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so now we'll take a vote to accept as a first reading the monitoring report for OE5, which is financial planning. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we've passed as a first reading the monitoring report for OE5, and we'll bring it forward for a second reading and approval at our next board meeting. Thanks, Mike. Next on the agenda is our board consent agenda, and I believe the only item on this area is the minutes of our regular board meeting that we had on December 12th. Any comments, questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the board consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded. Oh, okay, it's been moved and seconded.
I'm confused on the consent agenda part, I'm good.
Yeah, it's only the agenda.
Just the minutes.
Just the minutes, but it's the consent agenda, so.
For the, yeah, for the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and next is the superintendent's consent agenda. Thoughts or comments? I think I have a thought and a comment. Due to remote interest in Microsoft stock, I need to recuse myself from purchase order number 1101710203, and accounts payable warrant vouchers 340289, and 340502, and Now entertain a motion.
Or approval of the superintendent's consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the superintendent's consent agenda passes as presented. Next is the superintendent's report, so John?
Okay, a couple of things I just wanted to update the board on. As of last week, we finalized the property purchase on the Hagan property on both parcels. I was able to sign those last Wednesday, and they were filed with the county, and by Wednesday afternoon, the board is now the proud owner of an additional 18 acres to support the work in the, in the bond for the relocation of Legacy Transition Program, 49th Street and the ASC, and then the future specialty high schools, what we have those listed as. Also wanted to report that just prior to the winter break, we did finish the distribution of all the 6th through 12th grade take-home devices, and we are now in the process of collecting and redistributing all the Chromebook carts from the secondary schools down to the elementaries, and we anticipate by the end of this month, we should be the elementaries, and we anticipate by the end of this month, we should be one-to-one devices in 2nd through 12th grade, if not K-12. It'll be pretty darn close by the time we get done moving carts around and iPads and everything else. We still have some work to do on some of the, like, the K-1 and some of the specialty programs and special ed on the final device that we're going to go with. And we're going to be, continue to work this spring on sorting out and identifying, especially with all the iPads we have. We've probably got six generations of iPads floating around the district, and the goal is by next fall to have consolidated those down and come up with one specific device for kindergarten and first grade, as well as our special ed programs that the Chromebooks aren't the best fit for. Sorry, I'm still trying to fight off a cold. Also wanted to share with the board that we're continuing to do bond presentations out in the community and with PTOs. We're providing information and sharing with them the impacts on the tax rate. It's nice to be able to say that a successful bond measure would actually result in lower taxes by 2019. So we'll continue to do those. We're scheduling those throughout the community. I've had Builders Association, Realtors Association, a meeting with neighborhood associations tomorrow night, and continuing with those. Just to give you a heads up, our head of OSPI, Mr. Reichdahl, will be at the ESD with the, with the regional superintendent's meeting, giving us a briefing on 2242 from his perspective and the implications on that going into next year. So I hope to have more information from him on this Friday. Also, we'll be attending the Economic Outlook Breakfast with Rob next Thursday. And the last thing that I have is I am glad to be able to present to board member Julie Bokenegra from WASDA in recognition of her six credits of professional development on the topics taken at the WASDA conference. They've given you a certificate that I'd like to present to you.
Superstar. How did I get one and not everybody else? That's, we skipped all the other stuff.
Because you probably signed in on the sheets.
Yeah.
Speech, speech.
Oh, that's what those are for. Funny.
Congratulations, Julie.
Well, that's what I have.
Thanks, John. And now we'll open it up for board comments. Maybe there's a comment coming from Julie, since she just got that certificate.
Precedent award from WASDA?
Yes.
Tim Gershaw's signature. That's excellent.
Yeah.
Any comments from the board?
I don't have anything. It feels like we're just kind of gearing back after the new year, and things will start getting busy for us.
My only comment is just that I would like to work with you, Elizabeth and John, to get our next communications committee scheduled, so that we can get moving on that
And of course, I'll need to sit down with you and pass the baton on the legislative representative work.
That would be good.
Yeah. We have the WASDA Legislative Conference coming up with a day on the hill at the end of the month, and then the, the district is sending me on the Federal Relations Network to Washington DC on the following weekend. So I get to keep busy through the end of January and the beginning of February, and hopefully it'll lighten up a little bit, because it's a short session, right? They'll finish on time.
60 days, right?
60 days. That's their goal. I had a chance conversation with a Vancouver school board member, Rosemary Friar, who looked me in the eye and offered opportunity for our board to cross-pollinate with theirs on technology and instruction. And I wanted to make you aware of that, and we can get into more detail about that later, but I count that as a really good sign, since so much potential for cross-pollination and knowledge sharing with Vancouver. They do a lot of things very well. They're, them what we do well. Other than that, I guess I'm just looking forward to the trips. Thank you.
Any other board comments? Okay, next on our agenda is future agenda items. Any suggestions from the board? Next on the agenda is citizens' comments, and this is the time of the meeting where citizens can address the board for three minutes, and they cannot be related to anything in personnel or legal. And if it's on a common subject, I ask that you either appoint a spokesperson or that you all come up together to make the comments. And if, because it's not on the agenda, the board will not be able to respond to the comments. So I guess we have people on the list?
Yeah, I'm going to read these out.
Sure.
Okay, on the topic of, have I got this right? If I read Gregory McKelvey, is that right? Joey Gibson. Should I read out the other names? You're going to come up together? Have different things to say? Ambrum, Brumfield, Uriarte? Uriarte, thank you. And Michelle Linker are listed for that subject.
Okay. Thank you. And if you can make your comments at the podium and set your name and address?
My name's Joey Gibson, 12001 Northeast 96th Avenue, Vancouver, Washington. I'm here to quickly talk about Gregory McKelvey. Last week, Thursday, Y East Middle School, he was invited to speak, and I just want to say a couple of things quickly about it. This guy, he played a video about Martin Luther King video, or Martin Luther King Jr., and it was his attempt to lure kids to go on the streets and to break the law. He said that because Martin Luther King got arrested, it's the same thing as them as breaking windows, blocking traffic, and setting cars, cop cars on fire. And so, so he showed this video about Martin Luther King trying to show himself, like, I'm the same thing, so come out, lure the kids out in the streets. He has a strong connection with Antifa. Okay, these are the guys that cover their faces, they break the law, he uses them as security, there's several pictures over there, and he uses it to intimidate people. It's his own comments, it's his own language on there. There was a news article, he was arrested, cops were called to his dorm room because he strangled and kidnapped a minor, a minor female, okay? And that's, that's very concerning to me. We don't know what happened to that. The records are, are closed, and he's never approached it, he's never talked about it. They invited Portland Resistance, he is the leader. Michael Rhodes is also a leader. He is a, he's a registered sex offender, okay? He is facing four counts of having sex with a, a boy, a minor, okay? So one guy's a pedophile, one guy strangles a girl, kidnaps her, and this is what they bring into the school, Portland Resistance, okay? Now, one other thing I want to say, don't forget, they took kids out of a school last year in Portland to protest. They brought them during school hours, they took them out onto the streets, they blocked traffic, they took over a bridge. They took over a bridge and did not listen to the police. They're trying to lure the kids to come out onto the streets. That's why they're going to the schools. And don't forget, one of them's a pedophile, and the other one kidnapped and strangled a female, okay? Thank you.
I'm Pam Brumfield-Udiarte, and I live just a couple blocks away over on 26th Street. I also am really, really concerned about Greg McKelvey coming and speaking to our middle school students. I have students, I have children in middle school. They don't go to Y East, they go to Cascade, but they're middle schoolers. And had this person come to their classroom, I would be absolutely appalled. For all of the reasons that Joey expressed, the character of the person, the criminal background of this person, but more than that, he went in there with a very, very clear bias and a very, very clear message. And to me, that's indoctrination. They're telling, that, that instructor is telling those students how to think. A responsible, good instructor is going to bring in a counter to that message and say, now here's an opposing message. You decide. You think for yourself. That's what I want my teachers to be teaching my kids, is how to think for themselves, not to think what you think. So I think it would be a very, very appropriate move to expect another speaker to be brought into this classroom with a counter message, something that's, you know, hey, you know what, it's okay to not want to be out on the streets breaking windows. It's okay to be a Christian. It's okay to be a conservative. It's okay. We all get to have our own opinions, and that's allowed. And that's not a message that Mr. McKelvey is about. So, thank you.
My name's Michelle Linker. I live right down the street on 141st. I am a parent in this school district. I was raised in this school district. And I've got four children. I've got three that are already in the school district and one upcoming. I've got two in high school, that both of them actually went to Y East not too long ago. I don't want somebody like Gregory McKelvey, who's basically an anarchist and goes out and busts up windows and is trying to, you know, call our children out to, hey, come join me in the streets and let's wreak havoc. I don't want somebody that's been charged and accused of rape and strangling and kidnapping a minor to be talking to my children without my permission. It should be something that should have been brought to the parents to get their okay. There should have been a permission slip, and maybe even a message brought out by the dis, by the school or the district saying, hey, this is who we're bringing into our classrooms to speak to our children. What does the community think about this? It should be brought and made our choice. They are our children that you guys hire these people to teach. And I agree with Pam that somebody else should be brought in saying, okay, hey, here's an opposing view, and let, let you make up your own mind. Thank you.
You.
John, will you get back to the board on all the?
Yeah, this was brought to my attention last week by one of the parents, one of the students in the class. And I've been discussing with Bill Omen, as well as the principal at Y East Middle School, and looking at the policies and the procedures and making sure that we, things that may not have been followed as tightly as I would expect are tightened up in the past, and that we are continuing to work through this issue and try to resolve it. So I'll get back to the board on what we end up with.
Any other comments from the citizens?
Once we've looked into all of this, that somebody from the district office appointed by John will be in contact if we have your contact information.
Because it wasn't on the agenda today, we can't offer any kind of response.
I think it can be handled just directly. I mean, it's, it's not the kind of thing that we need to go to public, you know, go to ongoing public meetings. We just need to, it just needs to be handled. And I feel confident that Dr. Stich will make sure that any deviation off of procedure will be dealt with.
Yeah, we, we try to make sure that we handle things like this at the lowest possible level. So right now, I've got Bill Omen, who is the executive director of secondary education, working with Carolyn Garrett, the principal at the school, to resolve this at the school level. I don't think this is a district-wide issue. It's, it's an incident that happened in one classroom in one school right now, and we're dealing with it at that level and trying to make sure that, you know, one of the questions that I had is, did we send home permission slips on this? Did we have a balanced presentation? What was the focus of the lesson? How does it fit in with the curriculum? And we've got questions like that that we're asking and we're exploring and finding out. And then we'll be working with, through the principal and the teacher, with the students in the classroom to try to resolve this.
Let's call the next person.
Okay, so next on the citizens' comments is Rob Lutz. Bob?
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening. I'm Rob Lutz, 2605 Northeast 91st Street, Vancouver, Washington. I just come and tell you that the Evergreen Education Association, their last rep council, needed passed with unanimously support for our upcoming bond. And so I want to make sure, let you all know that, and that we are looking forward to working diligently and trying to do our part in getting that passed, so that we have quality, safe, and acceptable learning environments throughout this district. I too am a product of this district, a proud Sifton superstar. My, my grandmother sold the land to have that school built. And, and so I'm quite, my parents went to it, my uncles went to it. I'm quite aware of its, of its age. And so, amongst some of the other things. So I'm looking forward to working through that, our organization's looking through it, forward to working through that. I was glad to see the superintendent come out to the Labor Council meeting, last week, I think it was, for a presentation. They're very excited about the possibility of some quality jobs that they can be doing here in this area, to be building schools for our kids. And we'll be bringing back regularly, hoping the board considers as best possible, local union work to build these huge projects that we have for our kids. Like an opportunity to be able to drive by these projects with pride, seeing them in the community.
Anyone else for citizens' comments? Oh.
I see Joan Skelton.
Really?
Yep, she's back there. Are you coming? Welcome.
That's right. The legend returns.
We should stand. No?
Stand and salute.
Signing sheet was over there, otherwise. Joan Skelton, 22503 Northeast 96th. I don't know where I'll be two weeks from now, so just, so I came today because I know that this is Board Appreciation Month. And so I came to say thank you to the school board for the way this board handles all aspects of the position. It is not an easy job to do. It is full, heavy responsibility. And it also has its fun side and its positive moments, but it is a lot of responsibility. And I've always appreciated how this board, and Jenny, I'm sure, welcome, I'm sure that you will be another wonderful addition to how this board has always taken to heart, how experiences that happen in our system affect students and affect the staff. And that you've always taken to heart that the decisions you make are critically important to the community, to the staff, but most importantly, to the students. And I've seen that over the years. I also want to particularly congratulate Victoria Bradford, who is now the longest-serving board member, I think it should come from me.
Really?
Who is now the longest-serving board member in the history of Evergreen Public Schools.
Oh, wow.
And I congratulate her for her dedication and for her.
Sorry to beat your record.
Nine days.
Thank you, Joan.
There is a board member in the state, Julie just reminded me, that's been on a board for 50 years.
Like 50 years in the state of Washington.
I'm just like, really?
Yeah, they mentioned that at WASDA, at one of the classes I was in when I won the award.
Wow.
Have you been on a board longer than Dale Rice now? Or is he still?
No, I can't remember. He might be longer than me, maybe by a year or two.
Any, anyone else for citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none. We will go into recess to sign papers, and after that, we will be going to our board workshop in the large green conference room to discuss the results policy on citizenship, discuss Operational Expectations 12 on facilities, have a board meeting debrief, have a legislative update, and a superintendent's update. Then we'll have an executive session on property. So we are now in recess.